All right. At this time, I would like to call the tonight's meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. For the record, all board members are present tonight. There is one agenda modification. We will add an item regarding OSAA under four, so it will become 4D. If you want to add something there, OSAA, in case someone wants to make a motion. Okay? We will now move on to spotlights on success.
Our first spotlight will be presented by Karina Lee, the Executive Director of Salem Kaiser Education Foundation.
Thank you so much. What I'd like to do now is invite Olivia Contreras up to the front, and also Mr. Morris, our principal from Grant Elementary School. Our Volunteer of the Month for October, there you go, is Olivia Contreras, and she's been nominated by Grant Community School. Olivia has been volunteering at Grant for five years, ever since her son Josiah entered preschool, and Josiah is here to cheer his mom on as well. This year, he is a second grader in Mississauga's class. She volunteers three days a week at Grant and almost works the entire day. Along with helping with classroom projects and group work activities, Olivia assists with coordinating field trips and chaperoning duties. Mississauga has said how thankful she is to have her. When she's not helping out in Mississauga's classroom, she works with other second grade teachers or helps out in the school's office. Olivia has even been known to take tasks home with her as her own homework, including recently doing laminating and class projects at home for Grant. Olivia is one of 12 steady members of the Grant Parent Club and assisted in organizing Grant's Jog-a-thon this year. The Parent Club works closely with Principal Morris and his staff. Because Grant is a healthy meals school, students in classes that met their Jog-a-thon fundraising goals this year get a sandwich party and be served sandwiches made of healthy ingredients rather than ice cream or candy. I'm so sorry. Grant Community School has 10 other volunteers like Olivia who regularly help out in classrooms and around the building, and dozens of Grant volunteers assist with big events like the Jog-a-thon. Olivia's husband, Transportation Department Field Coordinator Roger Contreras, and he's here too, oh, yeah, there he is, also works for Salem Kaiser Public Schools and is supportive of Olivia's volunteer work. Grant Community School and all of us would like to thank Olivia for all she does for students, staff, and families. Her dependable, consistent efforts truly make a difference.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Lynda Myers, the Director of Strategic Initiatives.
I'd like to invite Steve Tipton of Silver Creek Fellowship and any representatives from the Hauk School community to join us up front. Steve is being honored with Silver Creek Fellowship as the Community Partner of the Month. Steve Tipton with the Silver Creek Fellowship Mission of Hope is our Community Partner of the Month, nominated by Hauk Middle School. Steve was a pastor at a church located near Hauk when he first started working with the school in 2007. Since 2010, he has worked with the Mission of Hope and outreach of Silver Creek Fellowship. He's currently a member of the executive team at Silver Creek Fellowship and Director of Outreach for Mission of Hope. On the last Saturday of the month, Steve and other volunteers give away between 15 and 30,000 pounds of food at Hauk as an agent of the Marion Polk County Food Share. This includes non-perishable foods and fresh produce when in season. Not only families from Hauk come to Saturday food distributions, families from across northeast Salem attend as well, and even families from Staton and Woodburne. At the Saturday events, Steve and his team also serve between 200 and 300 hot meals to families. In addition, working with Hauk teacher Wendy Smith, Steve has provided non-perishable food for a food closet at the middle school. Principal Suzanne Leonard says many Hauk students would go hungry over the weekend if they couldn't fill their backpacks with food from the food closet on Friday afternoons. "We love Hauk," Steve says. "In the last 10 years, we've helped provide food for block parties and for the school's family literacy night, too." Steve says he's always looking for volunteers to help with food distributions for Hauk families and the community in northeast Salem. He can be contacted through the Silver Creek Fellowship. Thank you, Steve Tipton, and Mission of Hope for your decade-long commitment to the Hauk community.
We have one special spotlight tonight, and Karina will come back from the Education Foundation.
I am so very honored to be able to invite Dave Harvey up to be present with Chair Kylo and Superintendent Perry. I think that's pretty, that's pretty cool, Paul. And I want to introduce in the audience with us tonight, which is Dave's last official Salem Kaiser School Board meeting, has joined us, his wife Nicole, and his two wonderful kids, Dave and Elizabeth are back there. Food Service Director Dave Harvey has dedicated his talents to the oversight of the food service operations in the Salem Kaiser School District for the past 15 years. He has been with Sedexa for over 30 years, serving as a culinary instructor in his early years, moving on to food service manager, and then as director. Dave has a team of managers and over 400 other staff members. This team works hard to serve nearly 34,000 meals a day to the students in Salem Kaiser Schools. Dave has built great relationships with district administration, leadership, and support staff. Dave is a strong supporter of public education and the students in Salem Kaiser Schools. He's been incredibly generous with donations and of his own time. If there was a district event going on, he was there, helping in whatever manner he could. Dave has also been a tireless advocate and passionate one for SKEF. He works creatively to support the activities and events that benefit children, family, and educators in Salem Kaiser. His work with the Foundation on the Crystal Apple Awards, the Awesome Breakfast, the Urban Ag Fest, and Where the Sidewalk Begins serves as a role model for all of us. His work with the district and the Foundation helped ensure that not one child goes without a meal during holiday breaks. Dave gives his experience back to those he works with. He shares his knowledge, hoping to make those around him better, and has been a mentor to many over the years. Dave truly walks his talk professionally and personally. A little on the personal side, Dave truly is one of the nicest guys we've ever met. He's a man of his word, very loyal and dedicated to his work, and very devoted to his family. He enjoys wine and the opportunity it provides to enjoy the company of others and the good conversation. He loves tinkering with stuff and is always looking for the next cool gadget. Dave also loves dogs and the ducks. He loves Elvis and can act like him on a moment's notice. He can be quite the comedian and has a quick wit and can play a lunch lady in full costume like no other. Last month, Dave announced that he's accepted a position with the Oregon School Boards Association as their PACE Administrator, starting in mid-November. We congratulate him on his next chapter of his professional life. Dave, it's been more than a pleasure to work with you, and we hope to continue all the relationships that you have built for many, many years to come.
Teacher Spotlight is next on the agenda, and I would like to invite Cara Bobita and Priscilla Guest to come up here and join me. They're representing South Salem High School and the World of Work Classroom, and they're going to share some information about the coffee carts that they've implemented with their students.
So bear with me. I can stand in front of teenagers all day, but adults are different. So I, I'm a fixer. If you're in my Personal Relations class, you'd know I'm a gold, if anybody knows what that means. I'm always looking for something that can be better, much to my husband's disdain, as I'm usually asking him to repaint walls or move walls or do things. So I don't know how much you guys know about transition and the transition services that we provide for our students, but legislation in Oregon and really our nation has really increased over the last couple of years around secondary transition services. And as those expectations have grown, we've really had to have purposeful and more meaningful conversations at South on how we were going to provide opportunities for students to learn more real-life skills. And these are students with disabilities. Long gone is the answering the question, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" Now we're having to ask them about their pins, their preferences, interests, needs, strengths, weaknesses, and then how are you going to be educated? Where are you going to live? How are you going to live there, pay for it? I mean, it's, it's much more comprehensive than it used to be. So we, currently, we have the Personal Relations class where we're learning soft skills, where we're talking about values and motivation, and then we carry that into a Careers class where we look at bigger opportunities. But we really identified that those are really soft skills that they're learning, and we wanted them to have an opportunity to expand the hard skills, learning transferable skills that they can take out into the work world. And a couple of years ago, I met Priscilla, and she and I both are sort of transition nerds, so to speak. We're just really passionate about making sure that we are watching our students graduate and have, have the awareness and the skills to get out there. So anyway, we realized there was a gap. We were not able to adequately give them what they needed. So we started asking lots of questions and brainstorming and looking at where other schools had succeeded and failed, and we decided a coffee business. We know that there's a successful one here at Student Services, and we've seen it be successful at other places. So we just now had to figure out where to come up with the money, and money and location. Those were kind of our barriers. But through Priscilla and YTP, Youth Transition Program, we were able to kind of eliminate those barriers. And I'm going to let Priscilla just kind of briefly explain YTP.
Yeah. Youth Transition Program is a, we are in partnership with Vocational Rehabilitation, and we help seniors transition out of high school into competitive employment or go on to college. We help them with employment, and if they have a significant barrier to competitive employment, then I take them into Vocational Rehabilitation where they get help from them. And so we have monies to help implement businesses in the high schools so they can have skills when they leave. And we need onsite businesses so kids can get these skills.
And what's really great is we've been able to collaborate with YTP, but also with other high schools. For example, we're currently working with, I think it's Sprague, has a sign business, so we're going to partner with them on our things. But anyway, to get to the, the business, the kids came up with Saxon Smart Brew. That is the name of our company. We've only been doing it for six weeks. We're starting kind of small. We're just going to be serving staff. We're going to start in the next week or two, and I just cannot express how exciting it is to watch these students who are not showing a high interest in college. They are showing interest in just going out into the work world, and they're students that generally you would find kind of shrinking in the background of your academic classes because they didn't really understand what's going on all the time. And they are just bright and light. They're showing up on time. They're showing up. That's pretty exciting. We're seeing leadership skills like nothing we've seen before. They've already earned their food handlers card. We've been practicing making coffee, getting feedback. We're doing customer service skills, work ethics, and the staff already is giving incredible feedback, trying to tip the kids and do things like that because they're equally excited to support such a great thing. So we're hoping to grow the business over the next year, essentially, and hopefully by next year, we'll have an actual cart. Right now, my classroom is pseudo-classroom coffee business, much to the disdain of our janitorial services. But, so anyway, I just, I'd invite you to come to south, at saxonsmartbrew@gmail.com. You can just shoot us an email and tell us what you would like, and I would love to have our kids deliver something to you. So, thank you. Any questions or? No? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda would be public comment. First speaker on tonight will be Alan Bouchong. Alan, I remind everybody of this, you have three minutes. When the yellow light goes on, you have one minute left. When the red light goes on, you're out of time and you get this signal.
Well, let's see if I can beat the, Mr. Chair, let's see if I can beat the yellow light.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Perry, and everybody here, I'm Alan Bouchong. I live at 4655 Lone Oak Road Southeast in Salem, and I'm here to state that a lot of people in the community want to support you and the staff in taking a stand with the OSAA, that the proposal to put us in with three Bend schools in a conference is wrong. There needs to be a shared responsibility. Our community can do a lot of things. If you saw the dedication of the field at McKay High School, you saw the amazing thing that our community can do, but we can't make Bend closer and we can't make the mountains lower. There's a shared responsibility answer in this. I'm encouraging everyone to step up and be passionate for the community. We already know every day, people join in and say they'll be there on Monday morning at the OSAA at nine o'clock. We're encouraging people to do so. If you need more help, please call your booster club president in your high school area or call me at CCTV at 503-588-2288, extension 31, and I'll talk with you about it. We'll be there covering the meeting, but the big point that I want to make is a lot of people are here to support you, and we applaud you and your work to fight on behalf of our students. Thank you.
Alan, what was that number again?
503-588-CTV, or 2288, extension 31. And my wife would say I'm there all the time, and she's probably close to being right.
Exactly.
Anyway, step up for this community.
Thank you. Please tell us who you are and where you live.
Hi, I'm Ashley Riden. I'm a freshman at West Salem High School and a huge promoter and, a huge promoter of the Hands, Words, and Not for Hurting organization.
And I am Ann Kelly, the founder and Executive Director of the nonprofit Hands, and Words, and Not for Hurting Project. And I'm going to let Ashley talk because she has an amazing story. And I just want you to know, though, I'll finish up after she's said some.
This organization has helped me as a kid understand the importance of just controlling and thinking before you say and understanding how your actions and words affect other people. But at my school yesterday, or a couple of weeks ago, I ran into a girl, and she's a year older than me, very sweet, and I went up to her and said, "Hi, my name's Ashley. What's your name?" And she tells me her name, and I said, "I noticed you had a Hands, and Words, and Not for Hurting bracelet on." And I asked her how she got it, and she told me quote-unquote that she, I'm sorry, it's a long thing. She said, "I haven't taken this bracelet off for four years. It's a huge part of me. It saved my life." And I had broken down in tears in the hall, and I was almost late to my class, but I asked her to meet me at lunch, and we had talked. She had explained to me at lunch, when I found her, that her parents fought 24/7 when she was younger. She, in first grade, was anorexic. By second grade, she was depressed and had suicidal thoughts. She learned at school the Purple Hands Pledge, and with this pledge, she went home that night and saw her dad beating her mom to death. She then told me that she went into her room and took a knife and almost took her life, but she had decided, or she had remembered at school that we don't use our hands or our words for hurting ourselves or others, and she knew that that wasn't okay and that she was valued and that she was loved. And so she goes and she hears a scream from her mom and calls 911 and saves her mom's life as she almost died because of her father. Two years later, her parents had finally gotten divorced after her mom was healthy enough to be able to take care of her daughter again. They'd moved into a house, and she is now one of the happiest girls I know, and I'm really glad to say that this organization has helped many people, including her.
Thank you, Ash. These are the voices you need to hear, and you have heard kids up here year after year after year. This is our 20th anniversary of beginning this pledge and program in this school district, and it has spread to all 50 states and 15 foreign countries. With those 14 words, we can talk about age appropriately, murder and suicide, and all that leads up to those tragic, preventable-with-education ends of life. So I want to thank this school district for all, everybody who works in it, who supports these kids and their families, to learn this pledge, get it back into their homes. That's the goal: safe homes, safe schools, safe communities. And when we take that Purple Hands Pledge, purple is also used to honor and to remember everyone who's ever been hurt or killed by abuse or violence. We don't forget them. I've spoken to people across this country who've lost loved ones to those tragic ends of life. Nobody wants to talk about it anymore. So I have to leave now, but one, one special Purple Hands Bear.
Yeah, he's out in the hall.
Please come in. And now it's time for the proclamation. But thank you, and we've got to make it not just this week, day after day, year after year, for our kids to learn this pledge and to aspire to live by it. Purple Hands Bear!
Yay! Yay! Thank you.
So.
Thank you. Well, the proclamation will be after, we have one more speaker.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay. Doris. Doris Jarrett.
Superintendent Perry, School Board Chair Paul Kylo, and members of the Salem Kaiser School Board, good evening. My name is Doris Jarrett. I reside at 4153 Noon Avenue Northeast in Kaiser. I am currently a special needs bus driver, and hearing that story, what she did choked me up because what I've heard on the school buses, the stories the kids go through at home and things. So if I choke up during my reading, that's why. I am here tonight speaking on behalf of the Association of Salem Kaiser Education Support Professionals in sincere appreciation to the Board, the Superintendent, the district-level administrative team, the school and department administrators, supervisors, for their continued support and acknowledgement of education support professionals serving the students, parents, and community of Salem Kaiser. ESPs work together with licensed educators and administrators to ensure students are ready to learn and are safe in their learning environments. We provide a variety of jobs that promote quality education and foster positive learning environments. Here are a few national facts about ESPs. ESPs make up a half a million or one-third of the total education workforce. Forty-seven percent have an associate advanced degree. Seventy-five percent live in their school district in which they work. And ESPs have been employed in the public schools for an average of 13 years. Nine in 10 ESPs say they choose education so they can make a positive impact on students. Eighty-five percent are female. Eighty-three percent work full-time. Some of us feel like we work more than that, or there are a lot of hours. Their average work, or their average age is 52. Eighty-five percent plan to stay in the profession. Seventy-five percent plan to stay with their current jobs until they retire. Fifty-six percent provide care to students with special needs. Sixty-nine percent have volunteered in the past two years to assist children and benefit the community. Sixty-six percent give money out of their own pockets to help students with things such as classroom materials, field trips, class projects, averaging $217 a year. Ninety-two percent have responsibilities for promoting safety. ESPs work to meet the needs of the whole student to ensure each student is in, has a learning environment that is physically and emotionally safe for students and staff. Each student enters school healthy and learns about and practices healthy lifestyle. Each student is actively engaged in learning and is connected to the school and broader community. And in short, there are 2.9 million ESPs working in our nation's schools, K through 12, and higher education. We are pleased to accept the Salem Kaiser School Board's proclamation of the National ESP Day, November 15, 2017, in acknowledgement of our work in educating the whole student. Thank you.
Thank you, Doris.
I forgot. Rita, our president, has a gift for you, for the Board.
Oh, okay. All right. We'll let, we'll accept a gift. Thank you, Rita.
During the meeting.
Chris Tarver?
No promises.
Did you, were you speaking about the OSAA? No, separate item? Okay. I wanted to make sure that, okay. No, it's okay. You can work it into your three minutes. Thanks. All right. At this time, I would accept a motion from a board member to accept the Hands are Not for Hurting proclamation.
So moved.
Marty, and then?
I'll second.
Jim was second. All right. Any discussion about the proclamation? Okay. Then I will read the proclamation before we vote. Whereas a world without abuse and violence is a dream we all share, and whereas we acknowledge that any form of mistreatment of another is abuse, and whereas abuse can be in the form of verbal, mental, or physical, and often escalates to further violence, and whereas we believe that all people have the right to live free of abuse and violence, and whereas we believe that every person can make a difference in stopping abuse and violence by not using violence to control others, by not tolerating any form of abuse from others, and by developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances based on respect and equality. And whereas we recognize and support the efforts of district staff and our community in promoting respect and equality for all people, teaching conflict resolution behaviors, and helping students learn how to stop abusive cycles, and whereas we recognize the Hands and Words are Not for Hurting Project's Purple Hands Pledge is an effective tool in abuse and violence prevention education. Now therefore, the Board of Directors of Salem Kaiser School District 24J proclaim October 15 through 21, 2017, to be the 20th Annual National Words and Hands are Not for Hurting Week in the Salem Kaiser School District. We call upon our community to observe October 15 through 21, 2017, as the Hands and Words are Not for Hurting Week, and encourage everyone in the community to take the Purple Hands Pledge. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and now we will take the pledge. Who's going to lead us?
This is exciting, actually.
Okay, so everybody gets to stand up.
You know what's really kind of special is if you take, connect eyes with a person. Turn to one another, because this is about us all agreeing to do our best every day to live by this 14 words. So raise your right hand. I will not.
I will nod.
Use my hands.
My hands.
Or my words.
Or my words.
For hurting myself.
For hurting myself.
Or others.
Or others. Or others.
Thank you. Be safe, be well.
Thank you. Okay. All right. At this time, I will now accept a motion to accept the National Education Support Professionals Day proclamation.
So moved.
That was Chuck Lee?
Yes.
Okay, second. Marty Hyon? Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, I guess I'll read the motion or the proclamation. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our republic, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas education support professionals are an integral part of the education process, and whereas education support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students, and whereas education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. Now therefore, the Board of Directors of Salem-Kaiser School District Twenty-Four-Je proclaims Wednesday, November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, as National Education Support Professionals Day, and urges that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of educational support professionals in our public schools. Okay? Any further discussion? Chuck?
I'd like to start that recognition by just acknowledging the great role that these support professionals provide in our schools. We all know the tremendous impact that teachers make and administrators, but I've seen so many examples of kids who relate well to our support professionals and, and they are making a huge difference in the lives of kids. And oftentimes, we don't recognize that. They don't get the credit they deserve. But I, for one, just want to say that I'm very excited that we're, we're having this proclamation. And I know I speak for everybody on the board when I say that we truly mean it. They're a special group of individuals in our community that are making a huge difference.
Anyone else? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye. Backspace.
Got it, yeah, okay. Motion passes unanimously.
I like support.
Yes, I think that's, yes. Okay, so our two proclamations are passed. All right. Next on the agenda would be, I believe, the report on House Bill Twenty-One Seventy-four compliance. Mike Wolf?
And I'll just open this up for you. Last month, I reported we had a non-compliance related to a couple of RELs around our financial audit. So last month, I said to you we'd have an action plan coming forward, and that's why Mike is here today to share with you where the non-compliances happened and what we're doing about it. So, good evening, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. So in August twentieth of this year, we were made aware of a common discrepancy throughout the school districts in the state in reporting requirements from House Bill Twenty-One Seventy-four, which was actually passed in the twenty-fifteen-seventeen legislative session. And it was really through our involvement with the Oregon Association of Business Officers, or OASBO. And so ORS Two-Ninety-Seven, Four-Sixty-Six was changed to read, "Upon receipt of an audit report, the governing body of a municipal corporation shall determine the measures it considers necessary to address any deficiencies disclosed in the report. The governing body shall adopt a plan of action. To address the deficiencies, the plan must include estimated period of time necessary to complete the planned actions." There was an additional requirement that was added to submit the adopted corrective action plan to the Secretary of State within thirty days of, of the approval. There were no findings that required corrective action plans in the prior year. So this was a new requirement that we didn't have to actually worry about in the prior year, but we did catch it this year in August, and so now we're bringing the corrective action plan to you. During the twenty-sixteen audit conducted by Grove, Mueller, and Swank, two findings deemed to be significant were included in the report. While corrective action plans were immediately developed to address the findings, staff were not made aware of the requirement to bring the plans to the school board for approval or to notify the Secretary of State. In the first finding, which is finding number one, teacher experience reported to ODE, Oregon Department of Education, two of twenty-five teachers tested for experience were reported in error to the Oregon Department of Education. The two errors were subsequently corrected, however, the deficiency was already listed in, in the audit report. The second finding was really in the area of the IDA federal grant, or the Special Education Program Grant, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The auditors tested a sample of forty payroll expenditures totaling eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred from a population of eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-five payroll transactions within the grant, which is almost a four-point-two-million-dollar grant. The testing found that three transactions did not comply with the requirement to maintain documentation of approval of time charged to the grant. The questioned cost for these three transactions was about two point, or two-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. This is what we refer to as time and attendance reporting for this grant. So the corrective action plan for finding number one, "Staff from Human Resources and Financial Services are closely monitoring the current process of entering teacher experience into the district's Financial Management and Human Resource System," or MunIS. This includes data collection, validation, and documentation of the current process to create a better flow and timing of the data entry and reporting to ODE. Additionally, sample data is also being tested for validity against the ODE-reported data, reported information. The monitoring and testing process is being conducted by the district's internal auditor. Monthly updates are communicated to the Financial Services Manager and summarized on a quarterly basis for review by the Director of Budget and Finance. The Chief Operations Officer will receive quarterly briefings from the Director of Budget and Finance, Financial Services, to determine if additional actions are required. All identified corrective actions are complete at this time, and the plan requires ongoing monitor to ensure compliance. Finding number two, "The district created an internal policy and work instruction to address time and effort or time and attendance reporting requirements for specific grants." The guidance establishes tighter controls in three ways. One, identifies appropriate district staff required to submit monthly payroll information. Two, identifies a protocol for meeting reporting deadlines. And three, establishes communication channels and decision protocols to resolve identified issues in a timely manner. The ongoing monitor and reporting of this corrective action plan for this finding is identical to the previous. The recommendation is that staff would recommend that the school board adopt the corrective action plans to address the findings listed above, so the district can make proper notification to the appropriate office within the Secretary of State. The board's action will bring the district in compliance with ORS Two-Ninety-Seven, Four-Sixty-Five, and Executive Limitation One, Global Executive Constraint, Section Two, which states, "The superintendent shall not fail to establish and maintain policies and procedures to ensure organizational compliance with applicable federal and state laws." And Executive Limitation Eight, Financial Administration, Section Eight, "The superintendent shall not fail to file reports or filings required by any state or federal agency accurately and on time." We would ask that you adopt the corrective action plan as presented by staff.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
So moved. Chuck?
Thank you.
Jim, second. Thank you. Any questions for Mike? Any discussion? No? 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 All right. Kathy?
Mike, before you leave, what actual actions have been put in this? We're still ongoing monitoring. So if we had a problem before with ongoing monitoring, how have we strengthened this?
Well, I don't know that we had as tight ongoing monitoring. And so we require, when you have mixed funding for a staff position where you may have multiple sources of funding and one of those is a grant, that's a higher level of reporting your time and attendance than exception reporting, which is what we do typically for the rest of, of the district. So we put in processes and procedures that weren't necessarily as tight as they are now. So we've tightened up our internal controls. We also are generating monthly reports that are being reviewed by management, quarterly reports that are being reviewed by executive management, and if there are issues that need to be addressed, I will be actively engaged.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the report, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. At this time, would someone like to make a motion regarding OSAA?
I would.
Jesse?
I would like to make a motion for the board not to support the decision to combine Salem-Kaiser and bend sports into the same league.
Okay. Marty, second. Okay. Would you like to speak to your motion? You can say no.
Oh, um, no.
Okay. Anyone else like this? Jim?
I, I'm gonna support this motion. These are students first. We call them student athletes, but they're students first. And traveling from Salem to Bend is an undue burden on these students. My daughter swam for West Salem when she was in high school, and that was when Redmond was in our league. You may all remember when Redmond was in our league. But she went over there for a swim meet and didn't get home till two-thirty in the morning, and she had tests the next day. I mean, it's, it's unconscionable for us to send our kids that far. And I get it. I mean, I've traveled the state of Oregon, and I've seen some of the distances that some of these schools have to travel. But to put us with Ben just doesn't make any sense to me, both as a cost to the district. I think it's gonna cost in excess of a half a million dollars, is what I've been told by district administration. Safety for our kids, safety for our families that are traveling over there to watch their kids participate, and I think most importantly, the impact that it has on these students. They are students. And we've all seen the studies about how much sleep high school students need. And just this travel, especially in wintertime, is gonna be unduly burdensome on these kids, and I don't think it's safe. I get it, Ben needs schools to play, but I think OSAA needs to revisit this and take a look at it differently. And I fully support Salem-Kaiser not supporting the league with Bend and having our superintendent. I believe you're gonna speak Monday, and I fully support that as well.
Kathy?
I'd like to back that up as well. I spent several years driving back and forth to Detroit daily, and then I merged Detroit with Mill City. And frankly, we ended up leaving the very young children in Detroit because of the hazard of drying, driving on icy and snow roads. If you do that enough, inevitably, there'll be an accident. And I, for the safety of the kids, I don't think it's a wise move.
Okay. Anyone else? Sharon?
So I would agree with that. And talking to parents over the last several weeks and getting their input, and these are parents of our student athletes who are incredibly supportive of sports, but do not agree with this decision, this preliminary decision. And I think as someone on the school board, a concern is also with regards to instruction time, loss of instruction time for students, and then just obviously the safety of our families and our, our students traveling so far. And I certainly understand, you know, the, the need and the want to create, you know, more competitive process for, for over in Bend, but it just doesn't make sense for us here in Salem-Kaiser. So thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. All of those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion passes. Okay. Consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that anyone wishes to be polled? Or any questions about anything on the consent calendar? Seeing none? All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. There are no readings tonight. We are now up to the superintendent's executive limitation four.
This is executive limitation number four, relationship with staff and volunteers. And you've had this in your packet for a bit. I wanna just highlight that we do have ongoing labor management meetings with each of our associations, and we continue to work to find what is the ongoing right way to communicate in a large district. I think that will likely always be our goal, to get better at that communication. So we aren't perfect at it by any stretch of the means, but we continue to refine our systems. One highlight from this report is under number seven, fail to operate within written personnel policies. Last month, I made a note of one of the pending executive limitation items was around child abuse reporting. And our child abuse prevention specialist has done really important work with the district attorney's office, the police department, and Department of Human Services. And we do need to modify our child abuse mandatory reporting training because of the requirement of underage students cannot give consent to sexual activity. So we are mandatory reporters of sexual activity that we know of with minors. So we are implementing a new updated mandatory retraining around child abuse reporting. In years after this, it will be in the annual mandatory reporting, so it won't be a separate report. And right now, it says, but that staff will complete the training by the end of October, but I think we're gonna extend that out to mid to third week of November, as we've been rolling it out to groups. We're getting some refinement on the training. So that's a highlight. Also, we've cleaned up the executive limitation concern around the House Bill Twenty-One Seventy-four compliance tonight. And then I don't have any other pending executive limitation reports to share with you.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? Any questions? All right. We don't vote on these, but we do go for consensus. If you're in favor of it, please thumbs up. If you accept it, thumbs sideways, and if you're not happy, thumbs down. So I'm seeing, I'm seeing everybody but one. Okay, we're good. All right. Report is accepted as presented. Thank you. Okay, Special Education redesign, strategic plan five.
Right. This report is around strategic plan item number five, which is develop short and long-range plans for the implementation of recommendations from our external special education evaluation. This is just really a status report, and our Director of Student Services, Eric Richards, will be giving you this report tonight. So, Mr. Richards. You had a supplementary packet to go with the board information at your dais tonight.
Good evening, Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board and friends in the audience. As Superintendent Perry pointed out, I'm here to report on strategic plan item number five. And before I get into the reporting about the evaluation, the purpose of it, some of the recommendations that came out of it, I'd like to just take a moment to talk to you about how exciting this work has been so far. This is a very important equity issue. We're talking about students who nationally, in our state and even in our district, have probably been the most underestimated group of students, have definitely experienced the highest degree of segregation in the schools compared with other subgroups, and who have traditionally been the lowest-performing group of students. So this evaluation is very important in addressing this important equity issue. And the momentum that is going on is nothing short of incredible and exciting, and I just wanna take a few minutes to give you a few examples of that before I actually tell you about why we did the evaluation and the recommendations that come out of it. The leadership and support from the superintendent and my colleagues on the cabinet has been incredible, and I'll give you an example of that in a moment. This has also been a very affirming experience to work closely in partnership with SKEA, Ask ESP, and with parent groups and- and with parent groups and community organizations such as Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality, Creating Opportunities, Fact Oregon, and other groups. Just a few examples of the kinds of things that are happening. Because even though the evaluation wasn't completed until the end of March, there's been a lot of work done already in our district. So one of the things that the evaluator pointed out was how she noticed in our buildings that people would talk about our students with disabilities as EGC kids or disabled kids, students with behavioral problems, students. Some kids even being referred to as a ten or an eighty-two, which is a code used as a special identification code for the state. And so one of the big challenges to us as a district was to begin to think about our students differently and to use person-centered language throughout our buildings. So in the spring, our special education coordinators were very excited about this recommendation. And they started something called the Great Bead Challenge. And that was an experience where they each got a set of beads and they would wear them. And as they were meeting together or working together in the department, if they heard someone using language that was not person-first, they would take a set of beads from them. So it was very meaningful, but also fun. And we started to see more and more people catching on to the importance of this. And so our superintendent this year worked with us to develop a video going into the school year. And all of our departments and all of our school buildings were encouraged to view the video before the end of September and to share that with their team members. And then to work on using person-centered language. And I have to tell you, every day, wherever I go, in our schools and different departments, I see people with their beads on. I see people catching themselves when they use language that is not person-first. It's very exciting to see us thinking differently and using better language and respect for our students with disabilities. Just tonight, I had a meeting with our elementary level directors. And they have been incredible in partnering with our coordinators and with me and trying to break down the silos that have traditionally existed between special education and general education. You, if you went into a building, it wouldn't be uncommon now to see our level directors with a coordinator visiting classrooms with the principal. And you see that special education staff and our department staff are being included in one system of education, not two different systems. And every day, this is happening more and more, and it's very encouraging. I have been visiting teachers in classrooms early this year and hearing many of them talk about how much more closely general education and special education are working together on behalf of students who are at risk and students with disabilities. And finally, another example I would give you is that I have heard both at conferences for COSA recently and from teachers who came to us from another district that people around the state are hearing about this exciting work that we're trying to do together. And that there are actually folks from other districts who have been excited to hear this, who are planning to apply for teaching positions, bilingual positions, and classified positions in our district next year because of their belief in the work that we're doing and wanting to be a part of that. So I have many, many more examples. But even though it's only been a short time since the evaluation was completed, there's an excitement and a momentum in the district right now. And this is going to be a great thing that happens for our students with disabilities. So it might be helpful to get a little background on why we had the external evaluation. To be fair, there were many good things going on in special education prior to the evaluation. But we also saw opportunities for improvement. We saw data points that were concerning that we knew needed to be addressed. An example of that would be in over-identification of students for eligibility for special education. Just to give you a little context on that. The state average and the national average are that thirteen and a half percent of students in a school district are typically found eligible for special education services. If you were to compare us with demographically similar, size similar districts, you would see that Beaverton has been identifying at approximately twelve point seven percent, Hillsborough at thirteen point five percent, and Portland somewhere between fifteen and fifteen point three percent. Salem Kaiser is identifying sixteen point five percent of its students as eligible for special education. And putting a label on someone is a hard club to get out of in life. So we wanna make sure that the only people who end up in special education are needing the services that come with that are people who truly need that. And we need to work at reducing our identification rate for special education. Another data point I think it's important to know about is the extent of our restrictive placements for students who are found eligible for special education. The Oregon Department of Education has a performance monitoring system. One of the indicators is how many students in special education services are receiving sixty percent or more of their special education services per day in a restrictive segregated setting. Portland public schools are at eight point nine percent, Beaverton at nine point five percent, Hillsborough at eleven and a half percent, and Salem Kaiser at nineteen point two percent. So we have work to do to reduce the degree of restrictive placements that we have in our district. And it's important also to note that twenty-one percent of the students who receive special education services in our district are receiving them away from their neighborhood school. That's quite a high percentage. So I've provided you with some background about the person who we selected. And I think I talked to you a bit about her when we came for curriculum adoption as well. But essentially, the way we started was it was important to have a vision for how we were going to redesign special education services in our school district. So the cabinet and our department worked closely together to develop a document that you have in your supplemental packet called Guiding Principles for Special Education. So Patricia's job then was to, as she went out for nine months and did all of the things that you see bulleted on page one and two, to compare what she was seeing against the Guiding Principles for Special Education and to let us know how we were doing, both good and areas of concern. On page two and three, I've provided you with some of the positive comments and concerns that she shared. And she did this by guiding principle areas. So you see that one is equity, one is program model, one is family engagement. And there was one on department collaboration where the number of positives and concerns were small enough to where she just rolled that into her high priority recommendations. So that's what I'd like to spend the remainder of my time talking with you about tonight. This was a thirty-five-page evaluation report. So it would take me a very long time to go over each and every recommendation with you. I just wanna hit the broad, high priority recommendations that Patricia shared for us or challenged our district to address. And I'm going to give you some context of why she recommended those for each one of these areas. As we mentioned earlier, you're gonna hear some of these things, but be aware that we're, we've already been working on them. And great progress has been made even in the first year. And you'll find out how we're going to address that from here forward as well. So the first recommendation, which really ties with item number ten as well, was to create a five-year plan to renew services to students with disabilities in special education. This was important because if we're really going to address our special education identification rate, develop less restrictive options for students with disabilities, and give them an opportunity to receive services in their neighborhood school more often. This will be a multi-dimensional journey. It's going to include the need to continue shifting people's beliefs about which students should have the opportunity to access general education. It will require extensive professional development with respect to academic and behavioral instruction, helping teams to learn new and more visionary ways to function, and incrementally changing our practices about where and how students in special education receive their services. High priority recommendation, item number two, is to develop a plan to reorganize classroom and itinerant services by feeder areas and to serve more students in their neighborhood schools. This plan would ensure that services are delivered as close geographically to where the student lives as possible. Such a plan does continue to recognize that there are always going to be students who require a restrictive placement. But with proper planning, it will reduce the amount of time that many of our students spend on a bus going to a program all the way across town. And it will allow them to spend more time being educated with people who are in their neighborhood and their non-disabled peers at their neighborhood schools at the elementary, middle, and high school level. Implementing such a plan will be dependent on adopting district curriculum and instructional practices for special education that focus more on instructional need rather than a category of a disability. And the plan's going to include yearly goals for reducing the number of students placed in restrictive classrooms and increase the number who will be able to return to their neighborhood schools over time. High priority item number three, recommendation, is to include all students in the development of school-wide systems of support. Patricia felt there were several issues that needed to be resolved with respect to school-wide systems for behavior and academics. She didn't feel that there are enough dedicated resources currently to provide for evidence-based interventions in our non-Titel I schools. This affects the ability of special educators to use data about interventions and student processes, student progress as a part of eligibility decision-making. She felt that we need a greater participation of special educators on teams that make decisions about students who need additional instruction and that this is very inconsistent across the district at the current time. This means that sometimes our special educators are not involved with students until they are referred for evaluation. Priority number four is to develop a well-defined continuum of behavioral services, including services at students' home schools and to redefine what we call emotional growth centers, or EGCs, and reduce their population to students who require a treatment orientation. One of your supplementary handouts is a listing of the different types of classrooms that we have, and EGCs are described there. As you know, there's a lot of concern in the district about student behavior. And there's constantly been pressure to place more and more of our students in what we call our emotional growth center classrooms. Patricia heard a common sentiment that significant numbers of students in our EGCs currently could be served effectively in their home schools with the Positive Behavior Support Initiative that we have going on. At the same time, it was very obvious to Patricia that we do have students in those classrooms who have very significant mental health challenges and have high social-emotional needs. Many of these students need an approach that is focused on treatment, more closely working with families and often community agencies with that type of expertise. A treatment approach might include assigning a psychologist or a social worker to work regularly with the families, classroom staff, and would use an intensive behavioral intervention model, a social skills curriculum, and would involve intensive progress monitoring. This is her vision for how EGC classrooms in our district should be redefined. High priority item number five is to decentralize. There is an uneven communication perceived between special education teachers, program assistants, building administrators, and special education coordinators. Individuals that she spoke with said they felt frustrated at times by their wait time for responses from our department and that sometimes they got different answers to the same questions from different people in our department. So we are already working on that. Patricia did law the development and implementation of a new district special education practices manual that we've had for the past year, which has gone a long way in making sure that people get consistent answers and know where to refer their questions to. A further step, in her opinion, is to decentralize decision-making about services and placements, such as training our special educators and giving buildings more autonomy in the assignment of allocated special education staff in their buildings, for a couple of examples. High priority number six is to reevaluate the way paraprofessionals are assigned, scheduled, and provided with oversight and trained. Paraprofessionals, as you know, play a very important role in the delivery of special education services. However, there is concern that the perceived need for assistance from adults continues to increase at an alarming rate in our district. Teachers have expressed to Patricia concerns about their ability to provide sufficient oversight and training for more and more assistance. Parents noted that frequently their kids were getting more of their services from paraprofessionals than the teacher themselves. Teachers also expressed frustration with the practice of hiring assistants for the hours of instruction only, which does not allow them to plan together as a team in the classroom. Furthermore, we have a practice that some of our adult assistants are not to report to work if the student that they are assigned to is absent for a day. And that can cause a certain degree of chaos in the scheduling of a classroom. So that will be an important item that we look at as well. High priority item number seven is to conduct district-wide training to support instruction and student-centered evaluation, referral, programming, and placement. Patricia felt that decision-making for students in our district seemed to be overly focused on where a student would be educated as opposed to what and how the student would be taught. This has led to a grouping of students by characteristics such as students with low cognitive ability or students with behavioral problems. It's contributed to at least in part an increase in the various types of self-contained classrooms with highly specialized populations. It's also contributed to categorization of personnel and services, making it difficult to efficiently serve students in less restrictive settings. High priority item, recommendation item number eight is to develop a common understanding of the district's philosophy and approach to providing special education. Our district has expressed a strong commitment to increasing the participation of students with disabilities in the general education environment and in their neighborhood school as much as possible. This is a direction that is both embraced by many in the district, and it is honestly thought of with some trepidation by others. The district has acknowledged that we've had developed, in a way, into separate and compartmentalized type of a program, a siloed program. Self-contained programs were described to Patricia by many as being islands within their own school. Some individuals stated that if students perform outside of the norm, they are immediately perceived as being inappropriate for general education placement. When asked about the barriers to increasing general education placement for our students with disability, the most common concerns related to expectations and practices that they felt began in the general education classroom. So the district will need to continually communicate its guiding principles for special education and its philosophy as some staff have misunderstood and expressed concern that we're moving to a full inclusion model. And there are some concerns that one of the goals is to eliminate self-contained classrooms in the future, which is, which is not accurate. So we do have to continually work at our communication of the direction that we're going. And finally, item number nine, district-wide clarify responsibilities. This is seen by Patricia as the need to develop working agreements at the administrative level and to standardize general education and special education relationships at the school level. Clear lines of responsibility need to be defined for things such as hiring, evaluating, and placing special education staff. Often, special education teachers are actually evaluated on how smoothly the program appears to be operating and whether the paperwork has been compliant. If the district wants to continue to improve outcomes for students with disabilities, it will become more and more important that teachers are evaluated on their instructional kids or our students with, instructional skills for our students with disabilities. There were several situations observed by Patricia where she felt there was a lack of instruction happening in the classroom or where great improvement was needed in that instruction. So the question then becomes, how are we going to complete this very important work that we've been charged with through this external evaluation? And I'd like to just take a moment to tell you about the process for doing that. After the evaluation was completed, we followed After the evaluation was completed, we followed the first recommendation of Patricia, which was to form what we would call a core team to look at the recommendations in her evaluation. This could also be considered a steering committee of sorts, and it's made up of 15 people, and they come from a representative group. This team met between April through the end of June in several meetings, and their work essentially during that time was to look at the recommendations and determine what could we be working on immediately. The next task was to identify the key priority areas that would be worked on by work groups during the 2017-18 school year. They determined that the four theme areas would be these. A work group focusing on teaching and learning, another on the creation of a hypothetical district, which is an interesting concept. It's a visionary experience of dreaming where we want special education to be in the future and walking that back through incremental steps on how to get there. There will be a work group that focuses on behavior, and then a fourth group that focuses on the important area of family engagement and helping parents be important partners in the process of education of their kids. I want to do a shout-out to SKEA and Ask ESP presidents for working very closely with me to identify people who could serve on each of these work groups. We wanted to make sure that we had people from all disciplines in the district, all levels, from all feeder areas, and that we also involve parents and community agency organizations. And it took some work, but I think we accomplished that. Each of these four groups has anywhere between 22 and 28 people who are participating, and a number of them are expressing to me how excited they are to be a part of this work. I think it's important for you to know as well that the district has made provision for there to be substitutes for classified and licensed staff who are going to be participating on these monthly work groups during the 2017 and 18 school year. Finally, I wanted to let you know that there are some implications from the special education redesign for facility planning into the future. As I mentioned to you, currently, 21% of the students who receive special education services in our district are receiving those in a school that is not their neighborhood school. A major emphasis of the evaluation report is to develop strategies that allow these students access to their education in their neighborhood school, just as their non-disabled peers receive it. To accomplish this goal, we've been working closely with the long-range facilities planning team to address the goal in phases. The first phase centers on creating a full range of specialized programs in each of our comprehensive high schools. The goal is to allow all students to finish their K-12 careers at their neighborhood high school. Subsequent phases are under development and will be presented in future board reports. You will be hearing more information about the initial phase with high schools in a report from our chief operation officer, Michael Wolf, in October. Thank you for giving me a good amount of time tonight to update you on this critical work that is so, so much an equity issue. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, questions? I saw Jesse was trying to get your attention earlier, so go ahead.
Sorry, Jesse.
Oh, no, you're fine. So have we had a listening session with, like, parents of kids who are special needs?
That's a, that's a good question, and we have. Patricia met with community organizations who referred parents to sit down and have a listening session with her. We also have parents serving on our work groups. There have been presentations about the external evaluation and the recommendations that have been given that were attended by parents and licensed administrative and classified staff as well.
Got it, okay. And then one thing that I'm worried about, because this is a five-year plan for our special education, the whole structure. What about the kids that are here now? Because that's the one thing that I'm worried about is, because five years, that's a kid in eighth grade, and they're gonna, they could miss out on this just because when they were born. And so I feel like the phases, when we're going through each phase, there are, there are certain kids that are going to miss out on this entire plan just because they were born earlier than the other kids. And so what are we, what are we doing to make sure that we're providing the same services and getting the same quality of an education to the kids who are not going to be here in our school system before five years?
Very good question. I mentioned a little bit earlier that one of the assignments for the core team was to take a look at the recommendations and say, what can we do immediately? And so a lot of work is already underway to try to, as quickly as possible, move forward improvements for education of our students with disabilities. Now, unfortunately, we say that this work is a marathon and not a sprint because there are so many things we have to consider: budget, facilities, transportation, technology, a wide variety of factors that play into how quickly we're going to be able to accomplish it. But the whole idea of the strategic plan is to have, one, year two, year three, year four, year five goals, so that we're moving things along as quickly as we can, but also we have to be thoughtful in how we do that and consider it in our communication in bringing people along and making sure that they are trained and have the capacity to do the work right on behalf of our students.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. And then are we, do parents know about this plan? Do they know about what her recommendations do? Is that available for, if I was a parent of a special needs kid, would I be able to go find this plan? So that way I know what's going on with my kid while they're in school?
Yes, we have provided a copy of the report to Creating Opportunities, to FACT Oregon, and to FIRST, which is a family resource team that covers Marion and Polk County. We have posted the report on the internet, and in some of our trainings, it has been discussed as well. And then in early June, there was a training that parent groups were invited to attend for any parent who was interested in hearing about the evaluation and the report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Sharon? And then Jim?
Sorry. So Eric, first, thank you so much. One of the things I really appreciated about the way you started your presentation was describing the group of students who are most underestimated. I don't think I've ever heard it said that way, and I really, really appreciate that. That shifts the focus. Question I have is with regards to, you know, you talked about the over-identification and really needing to look at whether things are behavior issues. How does this incorporate with the work that the district's currently doing with PBIS and the behavior team and all of that? I see them on your chart, and I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm not clear how that's all going to incorporate, because my understanding is with PBIS, we're starting with kind of the, the highest level and kind of working our way back down. So how do we meet in the middle?
That's an excellent question, and I think all of us in the district would agree that we've been a little bit late getting going on PBIS and RTI in our district, but there is a commitment to do that, and we are involved in both initiatives now. That plays a very important part. The RTI looks at the academic side of what we would call a triangle, and PBIS at the behavioral side. And through the use of research-based interventions, we are able to provide educational interventions that we hope might help a student and prevent them from eventually being labeled and referred into special education. Where this has been implemented in other places, identification rates do decline, and you see that with specific learning disability and for emotional disturbance, for example, as a couple of the categories.
Okay, edit. Okay, Mr. Green?
Real quickly, Eric, I've known Patricia for probably over 20 years, and I really respect her work, so I'm glad you hired her to do this evaluation. She's done some excellent work in special education, leading the State Department, I think twice-
Correct.
-in the area of special ed. So I'm glad she was there. My question really deals with your work groups, and I'm glad we're giving substitute time to our teachers and our other educational professionals to go. My question is, how is parent involvement in those groups? Because we can't give substitute work jobs for parents, and if it's during the normal workday, it's really hard for parents to get there. Are we assuring that we're involving those parents in those work groups and getting their input in, in what's going on? Because it's really important to engage those parents of students with disabilities in this process so that they feel they have a voice, and they probably know their student better than we do, and their needs, and the things that we haven't done well. So give me a little bit of, of feedback on how we're engaging these parents and ensuring that parent involvement is key in these four work groups.
Yes, Director Green. We, we're doing everything we can to ensure that we have good parental participation. That's included meetings with Creating Opportunities, which represents Marion and Polk County parents who have children with disabilities. I know you're familiar with FACT Oregon, which is a statewide parent training network for parents all over Oregon. We also have had referrals from the Coalition for Equality for people to serve on the work group. And in talking with Cheryl Cisneros, for example, who is the executive director of Creating Opportunities, one thing that was interesting is she said that a lot of parents actually prefer meeting during the day to the evening, and I found that very interesting. It has been difficult to get large numbers, but we do have parent representation on all of our work groups, and some of the parents are serving on multiple work groups. And just as another way of ensuring that we get family feedback, because some parents may not be able to make meetings occasionally, I provide regular updates every six weeks to a group called FIRST that meets over at the United Way Building. And this is a broad network of parents from Salem or from Marion and Polk Counties where we report to them and get their feedback on the work that we're doing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Your highest priority recommendation, number five, just merely says decentralization. Are you talking there about spreading programs to every single school? Or are you, what are you talking about with decentralization?
I think what Patricia was getting at with that is that special education's kind of been over here, and all students with, who are in special education services have been perceived to be special education department, and that we are there to resolve all the problems, when in actuality, they're kids of our district, they're kids in the building. And part of that's been our fault, and part of it's been perceptions in the building. So the goal is for us all to see students as belonging in the school community, and for us to help the buildings feel like they have more autonomy in making decisions such as how to utilize the staff that's allocated out of our budget in their buildings, as one example, or how to resolve student concerns that come up without having to check in with student services all the time.
Questions?
You must have a group of people that are not in favor of decentralization, frankly.
I, I haven't heard anything regarding decentralization so far. Any concerns expressed about that?
So not all parents I've talked to are happy about having their children taken out of their room and put in other areas with, with children that aren't impaired?
Yeah. While I think that you, you have, will have a wide variety of opinions from all the representative groups, as far as placement of a student with this disability, under law, the assumption of the least restrictive environment starts in the neighborhood school. And an IEP team actually makes a decision about where the student is properly placed in the least restrictive environment. But we do believe that too often the reflex has been when a student is struggling to want to refer them for special education and end up having them be identified. And in some cases, that really probably hasn't been appropriate.
Okay. Anyone else? Jesse?
Going off of what, what Jim was saying, you said in the, that the work groups are about 22 to 28 people, is that right? How many of those do you think are parents for, from each group, roughly?
I, I would guess three or four parents on each work group.
Okay, and then my other thing was actually something I got from a parent one sometime, and when we were talking about how we're wanting to think more personalized a lot of our kids who are in special education, a part of it becomes thinking of them as a kid who has this, who needs this actual extra attention or extra, a modified curriculum. And one thing that was brought up to me was, which of course I'm not sure if this is something we would want to do, but bring up the idea of maybe instead of using the term, this is a kid in special education, maybe saying, hey, this is a kid with a modified curriculum, because that's what we're doing, we're modifying their curriculum for the kid. So that way they're still just a normal student, just like everybody else, but their curriculum's modified.
Well, the, the definition of specially-designed instruction, which is what special education is-
Sure.
-is modification of the delivery of instruction or the content of instruction to meet the need of the student in an individualized way so that they can access general education as much as possible and work toward the standards that the state has established.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
I'm sure Eric's willing to meet with anyone individually to answer any further questions. Thank you. Mr. Wolf, how long will you be?
I'm thinking, Chair, five minutes or less.
Five minutes or less would be good.
Great.
Well, welcome, or welcome, hello again. Welcome to an update. So here, so we've been busy with the bond, as you may expect, and good news, we received an $8 million matching grant from Oregon Department of Education, the AWSSOM program, which is the Oregon School Capital Improvement Matching Program. That's for the May election. We are finishing up our conceptual design review process. We have completed 26 schools, 16 elementary, six middle, and four high schools. We have the remaining two high schools this week. Tomorrow is South, and Thursday is McNary. We've made initial contact with all of the properties of interest to the board, and we're starting our due diligence work on those as well. We are initiating a seismic panel, actually a seismic process review panel, to help us, to help the board when we have that conversation in November around the seismic update. We've reached out to over 450 citizens through neighborhood association meetings and civic organization meetings as well. We're beginning our awareness campaign, as was described by, by Lillian last month, and that's the inside-out process. We also have scheduled the listening and learning town hall meetings for each of the board members, and we'll be conducting those over the next several weeks. And then finally, as Eric said, we will be bringing you information on the 24th of this month at a, at a work session, a board meeting, on the special education classroom needs at our six comprehensive high schools. Less than five minutes.
That was good. Any questions for Mike at this point? Okay, thank you, Mike.
All right.
The next item on the agenda would be the information, I believe, which would be, I would just reference everybody that the bond, listening, and learning sessions are on your calendars. Please make sure that you've noted those, and when, you will be expected to be there. And I understand that Jim's missing one, and so we'll find a replacement for him. So, okay. The next item on the agenda would be public comment on non-agenda items, and we have two. We have Laura Mack. Did I get it right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And you, as before, you have three minutes. When the yellow light goes on, you have one minute.
Okay.
And when the red light goes on, you get the sign, so.
Thank you, members of the board, for hearing public comment tonight. Creativity is everywhere. What?
Where you live.
Oh, I have to say where I live?
Yeah.
I'm in Salem, 3794 Saxon Drive South.
Got it, thanks.
Laura Mack is my name.
Now you're three minutes.
Now I'm official.
Now you're official.
Creativity is everywhere. You might have noticed that when I came in the room, I started tagging things all around because light switches and new-fangled chalkboards and chairs and our clothes. There has been a creative mind behind every single thing we touch and interact with, the systems we encounter. Yet, in Salem Kaiser, we're- Yet, in Salem-Kaiser, we aren't taking creativity very seriously in the education system, and we need to be doing that. I'm a parent of two children in elementary schools right now, and I've done my part on the local level at Salem Heights, where my kids go to school. I've worked with a couple other artist parents, and we volunteer in our schools and work with an amazing cadre of volunteer parents. But those volunteer programs only get three art lessons to the kids three times per year for one hour each time. That isn't enough to teach the skills of creativity that we know high-quality art education can teach. They teach, and this is from Studio Habits of Mind by Lois Hetlin and Ellen Winner. They documented and researched what art education actually teaches in terms of creativity. It includes observation and reflection, it includes persistence, risk-taking. These are the tools of a creative thinker's toolbox. It includes knowing there are multiple solutions to any given problem, it's comfort with ambiguity in uncertain times, and it's also envisioning, the ability to imagine something different. And if there was ever a time we needed our citizens to grow up to be adaptable and imaginative, it's now. Kindergarteners actually have incredible creative thinking skills, incredible. It was documented by George Land and Research back in 1965. And he found that 98% of kindergarteners are in the nine, 98% are in the genius level in terms of divergent thinking skills. And as we educate them, as they grow, those divergent thinking skills go down. By the time they're 15, it's down to 12% at the genius level, and by the time they're 24, it's 2%. So we need to be doing better in education. It's not necessarily the education system that's making this happen, but maybe we naturally create these different mental models as we grow, and it's harder for us to find these new connections. But why can't our education, our education system do that for our kids, to turn them into really wonderful creative thinkers as they age? There's a poster over there that says something about Oregon Children's Art. Well, let's put some money where our mouth is and really support art in children. Let's put the art teachers back in elementary schools here in Salem-Kaiser. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have stuff to pass out.
Okay. All right. Chris Tarver.
Baseball softball field at McKay High School. My name's Chris Tarver. I live at 4656 Dutchess Court Northeast in Salem, Oregon. I have three sons in the school district. My oldest is a junior at McKay High School. I want to talk about the baseball softball facilities. But first, I want to tell you all, thank you very much. And not for the OSAA thing, but thank you for that, too. My son plays football, my son plays baseball at McKay. The turf field project, it was just completed at the school. Everyone should come and see the field. It's beautiful. Talk about creative beautification of an area. I mean, as you take a look at those pictures, I know all of you have seen the completed project there. It's a shame that when you stand on that field and look at how beautiful it is and how great those kids look playing on it, you look to your right and your left, and you see those kinds of things. The softball and baseball situation with the fields, it's my understanding that the field's just adjacent to the school, it's just north of the school, in McKay Park. The varsity fields, baseball and softball, are district property. The other two fields that are more into the park, which are our JV fields, as I've been told, is City Park property. However, we're charged with maintaining it. And when I say "we," it seems like "we" is like me and some other parents and the coaches, and anybody that we can find that has the proper equipment, machinery, and knowledge and time to do it. As you can see, it's pretty rough. You know, granted, these pictures were taken in the fall and spring, fall and late summer. Spring is much more wet. However, our varsity baseball field, it looks like a links golf course. I mean, it's up, it's down, it's everywhere. The pitching mound is not serviceable, it's not safe. Neither, really, none of the four fields are safe. Pretty soon, it's going to be baseball time. Pitchers and catchers are going to start reporting here before you know it. And where are our kids going to report to? You know, I hate to come to you guys because I know you have a lot more on your plates. You're charged with a lot of important things. However, on behalf of our coaches, I'll speak for them. They do a lot of work, a lot more work than they should be doing, maintaining those fields. And they should be spending that time coaching or teaching. Most of them are teachers at the school. Our students, we can always use more practice time. Anyone can. They don't need to practice landscaping and field maintenance. I don't mind doing it. There's a lot of parents that don't mind. However, we don't all have time for it. We just need to get access to the proper equipment and machinery, and I'm more than happy to do it, and so are a lot of other folks. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the OSAA thing.
Thank you. All right, that completes the list. Board activity report. Anyone like to report on what they've been doing? Marty?
Yeah, I got an opportunity, along with Jesse, to visit some of the Roberts schools, and it was really very reassuring to see how we're meeting the needs of some of our students who are going through a difficult time in the district. One thing I have to point out, though, that I've always, you know, I've been to early college high school many times, but there's this long hall. Team, parents use it, the babies use it, the early college students use it. And I know it's a Schumacher building, okay? There's this long hall full of windows that used to have bushes, and now they're gone. So walking down that hall is like going through a sauna in August, and it's with no ventilation. It's-
She's not wrong.
I'm not wrong. So I don't know if we can reach out to Schumacher and put some plastic coating on those windows or plant some new bushes or something, but it was pretty miserable for the students to use that hallway.
Anyone else? Sharon, then Kathy?
So two Saturdays ago, I attended the South High School Culinary Chopped Challenge. It was held at the Saturday Market, and I believe it was the first annual. And the chef, Laura, has put out a challenge to all of the other schools, if they'd like to participate in May. And it was just a really, really awesome community event. It was judged by the mayor and Jerry Frank and others, and it was just a really, really neat event. We got to showcase the student talent and the ability, and they were able to present to the, you know, to the crowd and just really, really show off their skills. And it was just a really great event. And I would say in May, if you can make it to the event, well worth the two hours. It was very cool.
Okay. Kathy?
I spent last week, I spent a good deal of time at Sprague, and I spent a lot of time in the special ed program, and it was extremely interesting. But it also showed me that it was difficult to handle the children in that room by the one person that was there. And so we discussed that quite a long time. And I believe it was a safety issue for one particular child, and I think that happens. And I wish parents were aware of that. It does happen. We just might need more staff in those areas. But on a very positive note, I went through their automotive program. It was absolutely wonderful. It teaches kids how to change the oil, even remove an engine, make all kinds of repairs and that sort of thing. It was very hands-on, and the kids were completely 100% engaged in what they were doing. It was an excellent program. From there, I went again at Sprague into the CAD Design Program. And I've used CAD in my business on occasion, and it's not an easy accomplishment. And there were children also, who were also special education children, and they were learning to operate that CAD. And I was just amazed. They seemed to enjoy it, they knew what they were doing, and they were doing some design steps. Then I wrapped that up in the childcare program for Sprague students that think they want, might want to go into teaching or home daycare or one of those fields. And met the most delightful girl that just was 100% into it. She was writing lesson plans, she was bringing things from home, she was identifying all sorts of things that would interest and teach the kids. It was an impressive visit. I also went to Portland Road and watched their career training. It also was interesting, and I very much enjoyed that. We have a lot of things happening in this district right now.
Anyone else? Jesse?
So I'm on a mission right now to go visit as many of our schools as I can. They tell me it's not possible, but, you know, you gotta give it a shot. And so within the past, within the past month, I've been visiting quite a few schools. And the one that stood out to me is me and Marty, we went and saw Roberts, which in your head, before you ever see the place, like in my head, I imagine like, I imagine the bars are really, are really thick. And I imagine beforehand, I would imagine it was just, I don't know, whatever you would think an alternative school would be. But when I went in there, it was, it was really heartwarming to me, just because so much of the staff was so willing to go way out of their way for students. And all of them, you could tell that they've built relationships with each of these kids, which is what a lot of them need. And it was really awesome to me because we went to one of the sites that was shared with Schumacher, so has the Early Learning Center for kids who are progressing to college faster, as well as a lot of our teen moms. It was awesome because they had a program where they were teaching like daycare and teaching skills to these students with these teen moms. And then later, some of them actually ended up getting hired in the daycare center within the school, which was a great thing to see, just because it teaches a lot of these kids that there's a future for them, which I think is so important, especially to the kids who, who come from backgrounds that have less support. And so I was really, I was really, my heart got a lot warmed up by visiting Roberts. And I suggest that all of you go take a tour of Roberts if you can.
All right, the only thing I would add is that tomorrow night, those of us who signed up, we have an OSBA activity at 5:30 at Lamity Estate.
Since we met last as a board, I had a chance on September 21st to go to the Salem-Kaiser Education Foundation Innovation Grants Awards. It was at Sprague High School. And again, those funds are generated from the AWSSOM 3,000. And it was just really interesting to see the variety of innovative grants that our teachers did. Again, the innovative grants are not supplementing anything that's required, but they're truly innovative. And I was just amazed at the variety. Also, just a reminder to all of us that on November 2nd, which is, again, is before we meet again, is the Crystal Apple Awards at the Elsner Theater. So I would encourage people to nominate people for a Crystal Apple, but also, I think it'd be great if we had a good turnout for our board members. Finally, I've, you know, the last couple of years, I've been on the Claggett Middle School Counseling Committee, and they met for the first time this year, and things are in good shape. And I just want to applaud the Claggett counselors for the great job that they're doing, bringing those kids along.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
So very quickly, we had McKay High School Recycle 3D team up at Omsi today, and they're the only high school competing up there. They got second place and also won the People's Choice Award today and $10,000. And they're on their way to a second competition. And I have a really big hunch you'll see them back here as a spotlight at some point. So we'll let them finish their competition. Special thank you to Wells Fargo Oregon Historical Society and the Executive Director of Oregon Historical Society, Kerry Timchuck. He, they brought down Teddy Roosevelt to speak to the fifth graders at Wright Elementary School. And a huge shout-out to the teachers and their preparation of the kids for this, because their questions, they came very well-prepared and asked a lot of really great questions. So about 20 to 30 minutes of time, students fully engaged and asking questions. And then, just one comment on an agenda item. You had in your grant awards Sea Tech Environmental, and I just want you to know, we keep working on our environmental assessment. The site is still perfectly safe for our students, and it was just an ongoing process as part of our due diligence around that property.
All right. With that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you all.